All right. Let Russ unpack and then we'll get started.
Okay.
You ready? Okay, so I'm gonna call this meeting to order and ask for a roll call.
Okay. Commissioner Hoister?
Here.
Liz?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Dr. Sully?
Thomas.
Here.
Mayor from Tim Meyer?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
And Chair Priscilla Montague?
I'm here.
Okay.
So it looks like it's a work session tonight with two items, the first being affordable housing work session discussion about potential language for the Ridgeway Municipal Code, Section 7-7 regarding affordable housing. And then it was in our packet, so I think we can just move to approve it. Now I'm just.
So clever.
So I'm not clear on who's presenting. I'm guessing Angie is.
I'm presenting both items. Nace is here for backup.
Okay.
So what do you think? I'm gonna go over the 2024 recap just super quick. I created a bit of a 2025 timeline related to affordable housing. Then we're gonna get into policy design for a little while, hopefully not too boring. And then we can look into the two drafts. So I gave you a draft of Section 7-7, and then I gave you the guidelines, which are gonna work with Section 7-7, but they're not gonna be in the code. Yeah, and then we can discuss. To your hearts can go. So some of the past considerations that you all went over included a lot of examples from CPS. Let me get this off the screen. So we talked through a lot of these, including affordable housing mitigation factors. We looked at examples where mitigation calculations were based on jobs created. If you can all remember these graphics that Max put together. We also looked at particular uses and whether mitigation should be higher for some or lower for others. So that's kind of mitigating a different rates. And we've kind of backtracked on a few of these ideas in the hopes of keeping an initial draft very simple. So we looked at some peer communities that don't include mitigation for industrial or commercial development at all. And most of the development that we're seeing come pop up is for market rate housing. And you'd probably wanna see people who are already developing housing develop more housing. So we also considered that land use mix with economies of place. And we drafted the documents that are before you, looking at market rate housing developers to create new affordable units through an inclusionary housing policy. So something important to note, when we met last, we talked about the term affordable and how it's kind of arbitrary. So throughout the documents, we're using a term community housing. So we thought that it explains the units that are required to be de-restricted through our standards without excluding people that aren't part of the workforce. All right. Timeline. So yeah, end of year. End of last year, we covered the basic planning for affordable housing. I also gave you all homework, which was an assignment to watch the recording of an inclusionary housing panel, and I'm sure you all did it.
It was very entertaining.
Very entertaining. It became kind of obvious that the direction for me all was to look into an inclusionary policy. So that's what we did here. In early 2025, after kind of revising and reworking and taking this in whatever direction you want, the hope is that we have something that can be adopted. I noted in here this incremental planning approach. So in planning, there's this concept of incrementalism, and it's taking very small little chunks to to create policy or tools so that it's not like overwhelming your system or the people that are administering the policy. So I can get into a lot of reasons for taking this approach.
It makes a lot of sense, right? I mean, people aren't gonna be coming in with like shovels and pitchforks because we're not going with like the full on one. We're gonna, you know, see how it goes.
We don't have the money for it.
Yeah, well, we weren't gonna say that. It's all gonna be about perception.
All right. Well, I don't need to get into it because I think you all understand the many benefits to taking an incremental approach. And the reason I created this timeline is because there's a few things that are playing into affordable housing in Ridgway right now. I wanna point out that before we adopt anything, it's very important to do some public outreach. So I have that kind of running the spans of the year. So.
When you say public outreach, like do we personally invite the people that it's gonna most quickly affect?
Yeah, we would probably, I mean, it's up to Preston and myself probably to come up with a bit of a public outreach program, but yeah, we'd wanna talk to stakeholders, developers.
I'd like to invite realtors and developers, but they don't ever show. It's kind of embarrassing. I mean, it's just ridiculous. They should be showing.
I agree, but people have, you know, busy lives and.
I suppose it's a vote of confidence. They must be okay with everything that we do or they show up.
I shouldn't say that. They haven't in the past. Maybe it's changed.
Charles, that year before?
Yeah.
I think if we combine that with a really aggressive social media, email newsletter blast, like just paper the walls with notifications about what we're working on, that will actually put the pressure on developers and realtors, at least the realtors to show up in some way. I mean.
Maybe. Free beer. We got a cactus.
I hope all right.
Food and drink always helps, but no, we could have some open houses and things like that. Sure.
We'd also wanna include the other jurisdictions, probably. Horry County, City of Horry. So I included in mid 2025, this Housing Needs Assessment, that's part of our strategic plan for 2025. So Dola has been hinting that some funding is coming down the pipeline for housing needs assessments. And on December 31st, 2024, they just released a methodology for creating a robust housing needs assessment. I'm gonna get into that on the next slide just briefly. And then throughout the year, we'll wanna continue to seek opportunities to help us meet our Prop 123 commitment. And we opted in, we're eligible for a number of funding opportunities by doing so, but the rollout for Prop 123 funding has been pretty gradual. So I'm continuing to monitor this and CPS is as well.
What are we on? Remind me what we're on the hook for with that? It's a combined taking an account. No, it's. Or 3%?
3% yearly, so 9% from 2023 to 2026 increase of affordable housing, but it's their definition of affordable housing, not ours. So there's some nuances there.
Okay, and that's 3% of what exists now based on.
We created a baseline that we submitted to them. So yes, 3% in addition to that. And the baseline is also nuanced and a little confusing to me. So I don't have the details of that. So then early 2026, once we have a new housing needs assessment and we've taken time to see how our program is working, I'm recommending that we actually revisit the regulations and the guidelines. And we'll also be doing a review of our master plan that's part of the 2025 strategic plan. So we can look at how the community has changed over the past six-ish years, which would be really helpful in crafting good policy.
So a review, not an update?
A review with, you know, pointing out what needs to be updated, I guess. And then doing the update is kind of a question mark for me. I'm not sure. Let's see. So in the last presentation, I noted that this is kind of a cycle. So good policy is revisited often. And especially when it's related to such a volatile market like housing. So some of the purposes of a housing needs assessment are on your screen. In addition to these reasons, there's an upcoming state requirement related to Senate Bill 24174. It requires local governments beginning in 2026 to conduct and publish a local housing needs assessment or a regional one if you have a housing plan. And Dola was directed to create a methodology for jurisdictions to follow, which was just published. So let's look at all the pieces we'd be considering in creating a policy or that we did consider while creating this. So in the draft, your packet includes the code language itself, and then there's the separate document of the guidelines that's gonna work with the code language. That has more detail and contains a toolkit of incentives. The guidelines are also intended to be updated annually when the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development update their AMI chart for the year. So that has the rental and income limits related to each county. That's our jurisdiction or our geographic level.
And that's included in here.
Yeah, it's included in 2024. They do in May, so it's kind of a weird, well, I think it's always in May. It's kind of a weird time of year. Every year, yeah.
It's based off the census probably?
Yep. All right, so program structure. So with all the considerations you've already made, we had a pretty solid base to base the program on or to build it off of. We looked at mandatory versus voluntary programs. We've heard from you all that you want a mandatory inclusionary zoning policy, but we can offer incentives to developers who voluntarily exceed the requirements. We also looked at fee-based programs versus tangible units created. It was obvious that you all want onsite units developed as a, you know, top of the list for compliance, but we wanted to include multiple means of compliance. So there is a fee-in lieu option that I'll get into.
Well, that's especially important when there's a fractional, like someone's not gonna build a tenth of a house.
Right, yeah, or a third.
Yep. We also considered just what kind of development needs to be responsible for creating affordable housing. And in this draft, we're targeting the most common development in Ridgway, which is market rate residential development. So requirements, that covers a few things. The set aside that we chose is 10% of the total development. Our code does call for 25% with planned unit developments of affordable housing, and there's different definitions in there than what we have for community housing. So annexation could also be an option for gaining more future affordable housing. And then income targets is another part of the requirement. So it was hard to establish without a recent housing needs assessment, but we aimed for a middle income range. I think we did 100% AMI or below for rental and 140 AMI or below for ownership. So there is an incentive for developers to provide a steeper level of affordability, meaning providing it at a lower AMI level for lower incomes. And there's also a design and location standard related to the requirements. So that would mean that community housing units need to be integrated into a larger project and not treated as an afterthought. So it calls for quality mixed income developments. And then applicability includes the geographic target, which we set as the entire town. We didn't like pick a couple of zoning districts to target. We just said the whole town. Tenure type means for sale or for rent. And in our draft, the tenure type and unit mix need to align with the project as a whole. Does that make sense? I think we went over it last time. So like if there's, you know, 10 rental units in your development, you'd wanna provide one rental unit that's community housing. You couldn't do a for-sale unit. So we also looked at project size threshold. So setting what type of development triggers the mandatory requirement. And we did a three or more unit residential development. And then for all subdivisions, all condo plots and townhome plots, they have to provide 10% of developable lots as community housing. Yes.
Just one thing, there's something I think Michelle alluded to was three or more, it triggers three or more 10% outcomes that work with less than 10 units.
Yeah, it would be a fee-in lieu.
We're gonna wait to, after the presentation, discuss it because there's some things I wanna talk about.
Michelle's saying yes, so let's wait till then.
I think it makes it hard to present.
I agree.
We might cover what you wanna discuss, but if there's anything that's just like confusing, call it out. We got another person. All right, so now compliance. There are multiple means of compliance, as I mentioned. So general compliance would just be supplying the units onsite. And then if the developer wants to take a different route, and we did provide them quite a few, they would have to attempt at the discretion of the town to meet the alternative compliance. So those include providing the required housing offsite, dedicating land within the project, dedicating land outside of the project, and then finally the in-ludie. And then for incentives, we could have added more incentives to our toolbox, but in the hopes again of keeping it simple, we use ones that we're kind of already offering to people that are developing affordable housing. And we group them into four main categories: increased development potential, financial incentives, expedited, expedited processing, and flexible regulations. And I'll get into that later. And then finally, when we're reviewing the policy design, we wanna also consider how this plays into a larger housing program for Ridgway because this is just one piece of the puzzle, as we've noted. So let's get into the actual drafts. We have a placeholder in the code that is 7-7. It's listed as hold for future use, but it's meant to be for the affordable housing regulations. And I just kind of put code sections in here, so I'm hoping it's not too many words on one page, but all of this is in your packet. And I'll just kind of go bit by bit. So we're starting off with the general provisions, which discuss the purpose. And the main purposes are promoting the construction of housing that's affordable to workforce and full-time residents, retaining opportunities for people that work in the town to also live in the town, maintaining a balanced housing portfolio that serves an array of income levels, and contributing to the regional supply of de-restricted affordable housing. The interpretation section is here telling us that if we, if any of this overlaps with other code requirements, the stricter provision would prevail. And then we also have just a release of liability statement. This section talks about the community housing guidelines. It just kind of alerts the reader that there is a separate document that they should be reviewing also. And then this is also where it tells you that the incentives for developers are in the guidelines, and you might not be reading about them here in the code. Performance standards. So we kind of already talked about this. PUDs would have a higher requirement, or they do already in our code. Annexation could have a higher requirement based on the annexation agreement. Condominium plots of any size, townhome subdivisions, minor and major subdivisions all have a 10% requirement, and then multifamily residential projects, three or more. So those are all, wait, did I skip something? Okay. So these are the standards that are applied to all of the community housing developments. So the price for sale or for rent is set, I think I said the numbers already, but at the range that we say in the guidelines. So in the code, it's kind of, it's not super, it's not calling out the numbers specifically in case we need to change those in it could be, but it does call them out in the guidelines. All right. So the other things in here are that a fee-in lieu is one for fractional results, which you just asked about. And then the proportion of tenure type needs to align with the greater development. And that community housing units need to be permanently restricted. Some people have a problem with that. So we would, we would maybe do like 100 years or some, something in the code. I don't know. Beau hasn't looked at this yet, so we'll see. All right. So the general requirements, there's an income eligibility requirement. A de-restriction is required. You need to do fair marketing when any of these units come online. There's a location requirement. And then I put a note in here about ADUs qualifying as community housing. I thought it should be allowed. They're very similar in like size and scale of a normal house. So if it meets standards, then it could maybe work as a community housing unit. And then unit mix timeline is something we talked about last time. What's up?
What does the location require? Is that location in town or location within the development?
Location within the town, really, or the development. It depends on development, I guess. Like if it's a many multi-unit development, you wouldn't want like the units in the basement, for example.
Oh, by the dumpster.
Yeah, or out by the dumpster. But then if they're offsite community housing units, then we'd wanna talk about like, are they in the same neighborhood as the development and do they match the neighborhood context? Those are kind of the integration pieces that we.
They would have to be within the town.
Correct. Yeah, how we have it written now is within town limits. Yeah, and I don't know what opportunity there is in the future to maybe do a more regional thing, but yeah, right now it's just town limits. Hey. And then compliance methods. So it introduces this new required submittal called the Community Housing Plan, which is maybe a little confusing because it's something that the developer would submit to the town, saying how they comply with these requirements. So it can, there's a lot of nuances here. It gets a little difficult if it's not all in one place. So we would want the developer to actually turn something in to say like, this is how I'm complying. This is how I calculated it. This is how the units will be, something like that. And then this, how this is approved is just part of the approval process. It's with the package that you all review. And any amendment to it would require the approval of whichever body approved the entire development. So that'll make sense. Okay. So some of the methods to achieve compliance, we already went over this. And then I just kind of drilled down on two of the options, which are providing the required housing offsite. So alternative offsite locations within the town, maybe a lot of certain conditions exist. And in here, we we considered like if there's incompatible uses nearby or if the developer's willing to provide more housing, and we put a number of 15% greater, 15% greater number of affordable units.
Does that mean 25% or 5% more than the 10?
It means 15% more of the
10%.
10%, so even lower, even lower number, probably.
What's the line? I read it.
Yeah, 15% of the.
15% of the 10.
And then if offsite units exceed amenities, or let's say they have like solar or some extremely energy efficient deal going on, that might make us wanna consider allowing them to do them offsite. Or if the offsite location's more convenient to a variety of town amenities. I think anywhere in town's pretty convenient, so those are just some options. Okay, so in lieu fees, there's a ton of variations in how in lieu fees can work. The option is only available if the calculation of community housing results in a fractional dwelling unit. We could open it up if we wanted to. We also added a bit of an incentive here so that we can target renters. Last meeting, I showed you some data and it kind of pointed out that renters need a little bit more help from us. So here we're saying that for rental only, an affordable rental unit at 80% AMI or less will equal one and one quarter community housing unit. All right. So here's just an example of that, if it helps. So you have 12 market rate rental units. The options for compliance would be two complete onsite units, affordable at 100% AMI, or one complete onsite unit, affordable at 100% AMI, and 20% of the in-lud fee for one unit, or one complete onsite unit, affordable at 80% AMI. So.
Yeah, this is great.
All right.
That's why I jokingly said, let's just vote on it.
It's not ready for that yet. So I read this 2020 policy brief. It was published by Urban Institute, and it explains that in lieu fees are the most common name for this type of alternative compliance, but they can also be called opt-out, buyout, cash contribution. And they're a really hotly debated topic.
Cam doesn't like them.
There's very little research that exists on the variations and their advantages and disadvantages. That's like the main thing to point out. So the same document gives a really great rundown of the three most common ways to calculate the fee. And here's those options. The affordability gap method, I'm gonna explain it on the next slide. But in that approach, the in lieu fee is the difference between the fair market price and what a low or moderate income household can afford. The production cost method is the method that I thought would be the most suitable or make the most sense at this level. It requires the developer to actually share their valuation, which they will already have to do if they're building. And we call this their computation of costs. And it's how we, it's in the de-restriction, but it's how we can set the maximum for sale price, the initial sale price, based on like how much money the developer can make on making, on building that development. Or that unit, I guess. So that's the method that's included in your draft. But then I'll also mention the index fees based on project characteristics. That's for like much larger jurisdictions where they have a lot of variation in like a neighborhood is like perceived as more expensive or has a higher value, even though you're creating the same unit in that neighborhood, for example. So this was kind of illuminating, I guess. I did this capital gap calculation for Ridgway, and I'm basing this on construction costs of $300 or $400 per square foot. So Zillow has some new construction listed at $750 per square foot right now, or just for sale. I don't know if it's, yeah. seven hundred and fifty dollars per square foot right now, or just for sale. I don't know if it's, yeah, whatever. Um. We also, we also have to consider the land costs in Ridgeway. And the maximum affordable price here is considering a thirty-year fixed mortgage with only six percent interest rate, which it's higher than that right now. Um, ten percent down, which is not typical. You'd probably want to see a higher amount down. And then fifteen percent taken off for like taxes, insurance, et cetera. So this kind of shows you just first, like a unit with this many square feet.
I'm not clear on the third column.
Um, that is the amount a two-person household making a hundred, a hundred percent of the AMI can afford.
Is the eight eighty-one thousand nine hundred per year?
Um, that's the income.
That's the hundred percent.
That's the hundred.
Okay, and they can afford two hundred and ninety purchase price.
Okay.
That's what they would qualify for.
May, I'm not a banker. I don't know.
Is that based on a thirty percent of income?
Yes.
You don't pay for.
Right, okay. Exactly, yeah. How much the mortgage would be. So, kind of shocking, I suppose.
I remember when people shocked at two hundred and fifty bucks a square foot.
And I don't know, four hundred is a guess. No, I think you're right on. And that's not including land costs. So if you're going four hundred straight across, including land costs, then you're probably on the low side.
Yeah.
I think four hundred plus land is, is possible. I think you could build something cheaper than that if you're building like more than one unit. So uh, that would be, if you get some uh, cost savings by doing multiple years, if you're doing one unit, I think four hundred's very realistic.
Yeah, I agree.
My, my, my concern is the reference to Zillow. I, I through my career has found that Zillow's not a reliable source. And uh, there are other sources out there that are much more reliable. And I have a lot of experience with Zillow. I would just encourage you to use a different one.
Yeah, Zillow, the Zillow example or the note about Zillow in here. This is showing you how high purse worth, but I was seeing on Zillow, but I didn't use it to to buy the four hundred number. The four hundred number is mostly coming from um, Mike and Jordan are building officials. And then just, we have an old document that talks about, um, I don't know who put it together. It doesn't say. I think it's from twenty sixteen. And it talks about how much it costs to build purse worth, but and it was something in the three twenty-five-ish range. And we're just, we're way beyond that.
Anything pretty tall, which is inaccurate.
Yeah, uh, we have a question.
Yeah, if you don't want to.
Do not.
Do you recalculate the capital gap, interest rates change? Cause your, your, one of your third columns needs to change for sure.
If somebody wants to look at this graphic again, this is just something I created for educational. Yeah, this isn't like telling us what a developer would need to pay.
No, and I guess my, my question is more philosophical. You, you make adjustments or is it set in stone? You make adjustments, is it for free change?
Yeah, it said it's reviewed at least annually. Yeah, the, the AMR, well, it seemed like this would be part of that, right?
This, this is showing a different calculation method, as a method that I actually chose to include in your packet. It's just kind of an illuminating example of
No, it's useful.
How crazy costs are right now. Sure. So then the guidelines, um. Let's, this is kind of just the table of contents for the guidelines. This is where the incentive toolbox lives. And in that incentive toolbox, I can't remember if I have another slide for it. Nope. Um. There is um, kind of like a purpose portion that talks about developing um, or offering development incentives to applicants that include um, more income restricted housing in the development than what's required. So the applicant is actually supposed to choose which option they want for an incentive, or like actually apply for the incentive when they turn in the application. Um, that's just going to take a lot of administrative burden off of whoever is handling this. And that can be part of that community housing plan that they need to submit. Um. I guess let me explain what those incentives are.
I think there are.
Okay, sorry. I don't know where I put it, but um, there's like tap fee deferment or reduction or waiver. There's plan review fee, deferment, reduction or waiver, application fee, deferment, reduction or waiver. Um, there's land for the regulation flexibility. I just included landscaping as, because you guys did that for ADUs and I think that's a perfectly reasonable place to start. Um. And then what else did I include? A reduction.
Expedited processing and increased development potential.
Alright, thank you. Um, expedited processing is something that Prop one, two, three is pushing. Um, so how I have it written in the guidelines. I have a section that's just talking about our view of expedited processing. And then I have like the Prop one, two, three. Um, how they want it kind of to work with like fif- it's like fifty percent of your development needs to be affordable housing or something like that. To then get this expedited review and it's like a ninety-day review. We're already exceeding that really, so, or we can be. Um, so I just included that in there as a, like catching that requirement or in hopes of catching that. What the state's pushing, so. Alright, and then uh, our income target I talked about, so for ownership, hundred and forty AMI or less. Um, and then rental would be a hundred or less. And these are moderate income targets. So on the AMR, AMI chart for your A county for twenty twenty-four. I'm showing the households that are likely to be served by ownership units. And then the households that are likely to be served by rental units. It goes all the way down to sixty percent AMI, but I doubt that most developers would choose to
Go that low.
Go that low or provide at a steeper rate of affordability unless they're getting incentive. Do we know what the percentage is at Space to Create? Um, eighty or below is the rental there. And then like Wetterhorn, for example, I think is like one twenty or below for ownership.
Which is showing, like you said, it's higher for ownership than it is for rental.
Hey. Oh, here's the incentives. Oh, I included, so under the increased development potential, there isn't, there is a height um, consideration, which I know you all have talked about before and, and maybe don't want to go there, so that's why I highlighted it in red. Um, fee deferments, we're not doing, we're just like waiving fees, so it'd be really helpful to have something in here that would just allow us to defer them. Alright, that's it. So let me know what you'd like to talk about related to this.
Yeah, yeah, it's really good.
Awesome.
We did get a public comment, I should know. It was extensive. It came in today. It was extensive. So if you're online, thanks so much. Um. I was happy to see that somebody was reading.
Yeah.
The packet, the materials. I'll just escape and see if anybody's online here.
I don't think they are.
Um, so I have some questions. Is now the right time?
Is this Pam?
Yeah. Yeah. So, um, yeah, I agree. We're not really fond of height increases, but you know, it's, it should stay on the table. Um, maybe, you know, like three stories maximum. Um, the ques- one of the questions I have is can town staff handle expedited processing? Can you guys really do that?
If we get complete, the, the problem is, um, we'll say getting completed submittals. And we have checklist and we have all these um, tools that will help us get a complete submittal. But what pushes us back, and it's not our fault because it is on the developer at that point, and it doesn't count into like the expedited review ninety-day um, mark, is getting them to submit something that they didn't submit. Or correct something that they submitted that needs correcting, if that makes sense.
Yeah, so yeah, yes. So if it's a complete application, yes.
Right, that's the, that's what makes the timeline so long, um, is getting it completely, yeah.
Right. Okay, I, yeah, and I just want to make sure that, you know, we don't promise something that you guys would all wither under. Um, um, another question was how many thirty-day extensions before town council must approve? Where it says, you know, they're allowed thirty-day extensions at the uh, discretion of the town manager, but at some point.
Yeah.
Um, it probably should go back to town council.
Um, you know, that's coming, that's coming straight from the Prop one, two, three, um, expedited review language. I don't know that they have a set number, because I think the thirty-day extension is a developer um, prompted extension. Is that right?
Yeah, it's if they, they say they need more time to complete something, not because they were incorrect or, or lazy, but because something came up that they realized they needed to address. Um, but at some point, you know, you have to kind of say, well, wait a second, how many times are we going to allow this?
Yeah, usually that's for like technical review details that, I don't know that.
It seems like a staff thing. I don't think we're in this quite, I'm, I'm, I don't think we need to get in this much detail at this point.
Oh, the only reason I brought it up is it's in there.
Um, okay.
It's in the language. Um. Um, philosophically and just based on your experience. Uh, does the in-lug fee contradict the goal of inclusionary zoning?
It, it said that the in-lug fee would only be used for, for fractional.
I would say no, Pam. I think that I mean, if you all watched that video, I gave you homework to watch.
I did, I did.
They explain very eloquently, um, which I'm not doing very good at that right now, but they explain that it's not a failure as long as it's not just sitting in a bank account forever. If you have plans and you intend to do something with that money that is going to further affordable housing development in town. Um, then I think it's perfectly great to accept in-lug fee.
I, I'm trying to want to comment on that. I think a fee and lieu with no project is, is not anywhere near as attractive. There's a, a fee and lieu, the town receiving a fee and lieu when they have a project that they're working or trying to fund. So if, if the town has donated, say, a chunk of ground for affordable housing and they're doing studies and planning and, and somebody wants a fee and lieu, that fee and lieu is a lot more attractive than that fee and lieu just to put into the bank.
Yep.
So I think it really, it's a timing issue and a project dedicated issue. I think we shouldn't just think of it as a fee and lieu orbiting around in the air.
But it's also again for a practice that we come up with a fraction. So how else would you address that? I mean, if it's a third, you're not going to make someone build another unit.
No.
So it, it makes perfect sense in that situation. And, and I believe your thing said only if there's a fraction, and we can choose to expand that, but that's how you wrote it.
I didn't see it as only as a fraction.
Yes, it's only if there's a fraction.
Might have read it wrong, but I.
Yeah, if it's a fraction, only if there's a fraction.
Oh, that's good. And that's, that's the only way you're saying to accept a fee and lieu?
That's what I wrote, that's how I wrote it, but this is not like ready for adoption by any means.
The other place where, the other place where a payment would be beneficial is when projects like Wetterhorn or Space to Create come in and they want the town to uh, provide tap fees. And those kind of things, we have the affordable housing budget line that we actually use for them. So that fee and lieu could be used for those types of things as well, when they come in, in order to help you reduce development costs, but it also help pay for much.
Wouldn't it also be useful if, I don't know, if our D restriction is written this way, but to hold a to buy something out if it were to go into foreclosure?
Yeah, like a first round.
Yeah, like we need money to do that. So I think it, until we're sitting on millions of dollars, I don't think we need to worry too much about it.
Agreed. The other thing I was gonna say is it, it needs to be a high enough fee. You know, the fee line has to be significant.
I'm sure we're good.
Yeah. I don't, I have no concern with that at this point. Yeah.
And I wasn't, I'm not kind, I'm not arguing against it. I was just wanting Angie's opinion because she's worked in other places. I, I will say, I watched that entire pres- um, YouTube video and it was excellent and I really enjoyed it. So thank you for providing it.
Yeah, and uh, Willa Williford, is that her name? She's, she's spoken here before. She's, she's a really expert.
She's a longer in the business.
Excellent resource. Um, there, I, I also read that that was a really worthwhile thing.
Okay. Sorry to take an hour and a half of your time outside of this meeting.
It was worth, it was worthwhile. Well worth it.
Okay, cool. Um, so I don't have any like specific questions for you. I'm just happy to talk about whatever you would like to talk about related to that. Um.
I think this is a great start, like.
Totally, yeah. It's an excellent start.
Yeah. I, I have just some questions that, that jumped out to me when I was reading it. When we're talking about the elder, the residence of fifteen hundred sixty hours as a, as an employee in a county, where did that number come from? Is that a?
It's thirty hours per week and it's, it, all, all the numbers that I used are very generous.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I can.
I mean, I, I, in my opinion, yeah, I thought it'd be a thousand.
Okay.
And, and just for me, I, I want to lower the ability for people to get into these. I want them to be more accessible, so. Uh, uh, way I understand it, uh, if you work forty hours a week, fifty weeks a year, which I've never done. Uh, it's two thousand.
Yes, okay.
Okay, so I was thinking, uh, my opinion was to maybe present half of that. So if somebody was here working, say for the town as a part-time employee and worked a thousand hours a month for, because they were, and maybe they were handicapped or physically challenged, or they had another job to be able to live here. I don't think we should, it seemed to me fifteen hundred sixty hours seemed like a lot.
If they have another job, those hours would count too. It's, it's set in your income. Yeah.
Sort of.
Okay, okay. So I agree with you that um, it should be a low barrier to entry for people at this stage.
I think we should make the barrier as low as possible, but I'm, I'm concerned about the eighty percent AMI. Because of, and I, I, I'm not as smart about this as as I should be, but uh, it appears to me that waitresses at Kate's make more than eighty percent AMI. I've been told.
Republic will even tip, they, they might, but.
Well, a first, a first-year higher school teacher makes more than eighty percent. Is what I've, I'm not sure if that's accurate, but that's what I've been told. First-year police officer in Ridgeway makes more than eighty percent. So I'm not sure that eighty percent AMI is real attractive to us.
Yeah.
Where a hundred percent AMI, we fit more who we want. And I think, and again, I'm not sure if this is accurate, but then eighty percent, I, I feel like we're starting to exclude people we know.
So we have it set at a hundred in the draft for rental, and then we have it set at one forty in the draft for ownership. I'm not sure, maybe you're reading something.
No, I was thinking about offering, offering incentives for developers to out, offer lower level AMIs like.
Sure, okay.
I'm not sure that's something that we want to encourage or that.
I, I agree. I'm not sure we need incentives. Our experience at Space to Create, um, it's really hard for people to, to meet those, yeah, so lower percentages.
So we, we talked about giving a developer incentive, incentive if he provided more lower income units, and I'm not sure that it's something we should consider. I think, I think a hundred percent, a hundred twenty percent, a hundred forty percent is, is low to be able to live here. And again, I don't know those numbers that well, but I, I kind of agree with John that eighty percent might exclude people that we want to house in four.
It has excluded people. I think what we have to do is just make sure we stay flexible, because
Yeah.
things are going to change, numbers are going to change.
Yeah.
But I agree, I, I'm not sure we need to incentivize. Um, I almost think we need to incentivize the higher AMIs.
I agree with John. I agree.
But.
The incentive is that they're making more money on those units.
Right, and.
Well, for, for the first time they buy, sell it, well, yeah. Well, for, for the first time they buy, sell it, well, yeah, for ownership, I, I was.
If you build it, you, you get more than ten percent.
No, this is ten percent of above cost for the building.
I'm talking about rentals, so return on investment for rentals, if you're renting them.
And I think that is the demographic that's young there.
And I think that eighty percent is also only referring to rentals, rental options. And we don't see a lot of people building rentals, I mean, Space to Create's a different animal, a different beast, because it was a.
I think this is discouraging, here, so without red here, I mean, that's, that's a concern I have.
Okay.
And I don't know what a way around it, but it was a thought that kept resonating with me.
Yeah.
Especially when, when it comes to the unit, when it is enacted with three units or more, because there's a family made Freddie Mac deal where you can get a housing mortgage with four units, so anything below four units is considered a residential zoning mortgage. So that, that was, I thought, so three, I think we're kind of discouraging three, but I haven't researched it enough, so that's, the, the number three jumped out, I think that should be four. And um, just because of the federal financing.
It, that maximizes, because I used to have FHA loans that give four unit blocks.
And, and.
And it works well, but it works better than three, it just makes more sense.
You know.
In my professional opinion, the federal government says that when you do both four units, you want a multifamily. All four units, they consider it a single family, and I think we should kind of merit that.
That's fair.
I'd speak on that if I had a problem with that, Jack.
I know you would.
I had a couple things, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, well, just to follow up with what was just said, um, I, I thought you did a really great job on this and I thought the numbers came in right around where we want them to be, um, the hundred percent AMI for renters, I thought was good. Um, just because if you look at that last page that you put into our packet, um, that was really helpful to look at how much a person um had to make and what they can rent for, um, like a one bedroom or a two bedroom or a three bedroom, and um, it looks like somebody who's making, you know, you have someone here who's working for the town or who's working for the gas station or for the restaurant and to have rent to be two thousand dollars basically for a one bedroom. Um, to me, it's kind of uh pricey for a person who has that kind of job. Um, I, you, you would have to make like seventy five thousand dollars to pay two thousand dollars a month for a bedroom, so um, I don't think people who work in the restaurants, well, maybe they do with tips, but um the other jobs that don't make tips, uh, that's a lot of money, seventy five thousand to make. Um, and to have that be affordable, so um, I, I like it where it's at. Uh, I had a question about density bonuses and I was just concerned about the density bonuses because in some areas, I think that we have allowed people to build, uh, um, and that to keep in, to keep along with our master plan, which says that we have small town characteristics. I would just be kind of concerned when we have density bonuses and how much density we're actually putting in that place and how it looks um with the surrounding area and if you have, you know, single homes uh mostly in that area and then somebody comes along and has a density bonus. I, I was just concerned about that as being something as an incentive, even though I would like to keep it there, but I would hope that we would have some kind of um measurements around it to, to make sure that that density bonus would be okay in that area or not. Um, how does the density bonus work anyways?
Yeah, we don't have a real density, like in a lot of land use code or municipal codes or land use codes, there's a density um calculation based on your zone, uh, so we don't have that in our municipal code. We talk about density a lot in the master plan, but like, I sent you, Jack, dimensional standards recently. That's typically where you would see the density calculation, whether it's like um per acre or like half acre or quarter acre. Um, so it's a very good question, Jennifer, I don't know. Um, it's, it's kind of in there just because I don't want to take it off the table as an option if like, say, it's a single family neighborhood and someone wants to build a, a bunch of duplexes. Um, I still think that works with the neighborhood character personally.
I, I think the density bonus is the only bonus that's attractive to the developer, so I think we should keep it, we don't have to define it now. We don't think uh height restriction, height variance and density variance are the only, of, I, I personally don't feel like the, the fee reduction or the time, expediated time is very attractive to the developer, so I think the density and height restrictions are the most attractive role we could offer.
Well, I don't think they're attractive because we already kind of offer that already. I mean, people who want it expedited as fast as possible and we try to accommodate that. So, yeah, it's not, it's not an incentive kind of.
Yeah, this would like actually put it out there for people who are exceeding our requirements, instead of just, you know, using it as a way to negotiate uh for housing in any project.
I want to comment on something else Jennifer said, I mean, uh two thousand dollars per one bedroom unit, I, I believe currently there are four one bedroom units per, per lease in this old firehouse for eighteen hundred bucks a month and they're not leasing because they're too expensive. So I'm, I'm not exactly sure of, of the, but I believe there are four deed restricted units available for rent that are not leasing because seventeen fifty or eighteen hundred dollars is too much. And she was talking, we're talking about two thousand, so I think that'll be reflected in the needs assessment.
Exactly.
And uh the needs assessment might help us with that.
Yeah.
So we're guessing until we get there, Jennifer, but there's some expert, we're having a little bit more experience on the ground here, which I find exciting, so.
Yeah, same. Max?
Hey, I just wanted to, good evening, funding commission, I was just thinking about what you're saying about the density bonuses and it's true that it's uh not an attractive option on the, the incentive is really, really strong. Um, from working with multifamily developers, you know, we're talking earlier about efficiency to uh building design. Um, I would say a more helpful if we're, we're not interested in density, increasing building coverage as a, as a form of, uh, as an incentive. It's easier to control uh in terms of small quantities and it doesn't expect, you know, a whole new row of housing to make it worthy for the developer either, and that'd be my suggestion.
So lot coverage?
Yeah, the, 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 instead of a density bonus, providing a increase in building coverage would be an alternative.
Thank you.
Well, mine's where it's always dictated by parking, and that, you can never make, never reach the maximum lot coverage ratio because you were restricted by meeting the parking, and since we've reduced the parking, I think what Max is saying is, is very relevant.
Um, I also had a question about the calculation of fee in lieu and then number two, the production cost method. Uh, you said that's the method that you prefer, is that correct?
Yeah, it's the method that I put in the draft, um. Mostly just the data available for figuring out how much it costs to build something is uh so variable and it would also require the developer to really kind of release the information about how their, how much they're spending to create a market rate unit, and then we make sure that the affordable unit provided or the fee in lieu provided matches that amount. So if they're doing a luxury unit, for example, um, that would be the number we use.
Okay, I, I was just, I had a con- a little concern about it just because when the devi- I, I don't know, we just, and I think it has to do with the pandemic and how fast things changed, but we just had an experience with the developers saying how much a unit would cost in our meeting, during our meetings. And then afterwards, when they actually come out, it's quite different from the number that they gave us in the meeting. And of course, I understand because the cost of production went up during that time, um, but it's just something to note to use that method.
Yeah, uh, we've got someone in the audience that wanted to chime in.
Yeah, and, and uh Jennifer, thanks for the comment, because it sort of explains into what I wanted to ask. I noticed there's two things, I, I just ran a couple of numbers based on your chart and clearly, if you're building a standalone, this is not happening, but it's sort of a theoretical consideration. If you're just building a standalone uh, uh, community housing, it just doesn't make economic sense to do that. And so the, the developer has to make his or her money with the other units of development. I, you're looking at a twenty year payout on those, with the numbers you use per square foot considering debt service, insurance, taxes, whatever, and nobody's going to do that. So the other units in the development have to carry the cost of that, they have to assess that for the developer. The other thing that I noticed is you guys were talking earlier before the meeting started about how hard it's been to get developers and realtors in for content, and I, I certainly don't know the, the details of that. But there is a point where we're going to discourage development. Right, there are numbers that are going to discourage developers from building these houses. And we best know what those are, are we way under that number or close to it? And this is all back of the envelope stuff, I'm not a developer, um, and I don't know what the numbers are, but I, but who's, uh, the commission to at least buy somebody a cup of coffee and, and kind of understand what their, what their pain limit is, because we don't want to discourage development of these units.
I, I think that's a really good point, the problem is if it's a nebulous point, I mean, each developer has a hundred dollars in his pocket and he might love being in Ridgway because his family's here, so he wants to spend his hundred dollars here and doesn't need to earn twenty percent on it, where another developer can make twenty or thirty percent in Florida or Texas or something like that, so it's hard to quantify that. And since we're, we've been real lucky, we're so attractive that people want to invest here, more than try to make money here. That, so, um, I'm, I'm hoping that will continue, but there's, it's just, it's not a financial calculus, I wish it was. And I guess this is a public meeting. We, and on this board, have gotten no respect from the real estate community, and I think that's a polite way to say what I'm thinking.
I don't think they're, they don't care, they're just selling houses, developers would care. I mean, I think the developers are the people we should focus on, the realtors?
We don't really have any developers in Ridgway, I mean, there might be some, I tell you right, Montrose, but.
Maybe that's why no one's at the meeting.
We might have some, we might have some growing in Ridgway, but we don't have, have that in.
The realtors probably know who the developers are.
When that, I just wanted.
Well, I, I would just strongly encourage, uh, you, you talked about outreach earlier and I know it's hard.
We've been successful because of our good looks, but it's not because of the yield.
We're accident sized with that.
Yeah. It's not because they make a lot of money.
Okay.
Yes. So obviously, starting again, I'm just going to mention incrementalism, starting with low barriers to entry, as you mentioned, for eligibility to get into those units. And doing a lot of tracking on what's being developed, um, is going to help us when we revisit these, hopefully in early twenties. For housing needs assessment.
When are we going to, and the housing needs assessment is just critical in my opinion.
Well, our last one was from twenty eleven and it was regional.
That's a scenario.
And we're actually encountering a little bit of an issue with the Prop one, two, three stuff because we're classified as rural resort, um.
Which we're not.
And the AMI level does not match with what we need to be producing for affordable housing units. And we have to do this petition process and one of the requirements to petition to change that is we need to have a housing needs assessment that's less than three years old.
How much is a housing needs assessment cost?
Well, if we follow what the state just released on the thirty first with that robust schedule, which I'm sure we will, because we should, I mean, we shouldn't redo a housing needs assessment to meet those marks for twenty twenty six or whatever year it was. Um, I don't know, a lot.
Thirty grand?
Um.
I just read the one in Montrose.
Thirty, thirty grand seemed reasonable before I read the state, right?
I, I think the one in Montrose was thirty grand.
Yeah, I don't think that's going to be the case.
Are they putting out money for it?
I think so, yeah, it seems.
One of Montrose's.
We'll have information on that soon.
Definitely. So at some point, we're going to wrap up this conversation because we still need to look at uh a rental, a D U, short term, right? So, and this is not the final of anything. Um, do you need anything direction wise uh from us to proceed with this? Did everybody receive the public comment from today, or do you want a hard copy if you didn't get a chance to read it?
I'm ready.
I didn't, I didn't get a chance to read it until now because I was.
It seemed to me that it would apply more to you if you're considering these things in writing this.
She makes some really good ones.
Yeah.
She makes some really.
Totally agree. Um.
I have one question on the public comment, where is Adobe Ridge Drive?
Well, is it Skimbridge, Silver Ridge, it's in, unincorporated.
I think it's like a County Road ten A, is it?
I'm not sure exactly.
It's not.
I think it is.
It's in the.
It's out, yes, it's out, billionaire, all later.
I didn't recognize the address.
Um.
Anyway, she makes some really good points in her experience during COVID, it was really interesting, especially at the end there. So I, I think incorporating some of her recommendations is a good idea. Um, otherwise, I think what you presented tonight is a great start and uh I was a little confused because your presentation didn't exactly match what's in the packet.
Yeah.
There's some.
You know, I, I went into some other details that maybe we didn't talk about last time that I thought would be important to.
No, it was, it was good, but um, yeah, I need to make them mesh, right, but um, no, I thought it was, I thought it was great.
Great.
I think it's really important that we deal with the, the financial challenges that she points out in her copies.
Yeah, there's, you know, the.
I heard she's.
The comment on making the numbers match, which Jennifer just pointed out, obviously, we would not require a developer to live there, wouldn't mean, so that's, yeah, there, there's ways we can um, make this like a little more tight. I'm just not sure what those are right now, but. Yeah, I'll be considering all of these comments, your comments and hers and.
This was a little clarity, I, I thought I read it here that developer was, was submit the cost for the, to create the deed restricted for sale units and they get, they'll, the cost plus ten percent, did I?
Correct, yeah, that's how the, the ownership deed restriction is written now, um. And yeah, we call it computation of costs that has to be submitted to the town, reviewed, pressed in the hands.
And partially paid when the building payment is full and then the other one was paid in full when the building payment is booked.
Um.
Doesn't seem like fee.
One was for uh in lieu and the other one, I don't know, there were two different scenarios, regardless, we're not voting on anything tonight. So I think that we're going in the right direction, further along than we've ever been.
Good.
I agree.
I really enjoyed it, thank you for all the work you put into that.
Yeah.
Thanks, Pam, thanks for your good questions. Anyone else on that, before we move into uh short term rental guidelines?
I guess I have one question.
Okay. Okay.
What do you want to see next time? And do you want to see something related to this for the next meeting? Because it's at the end of this month, right now. That's how we have it set.
Unless, if you can have something prepared for the next meeting, um, I don't, I was gonna ask, like, how do we move along with this process, but you kind of laid it out at the beginning and said, you know, we're not ready to vote on this yet. There's other factors that are gonna come into play. You had a slide right at the beginning.
Yeah. Um.
We couldn't vote on it tonight, even though I wanted to.
I, I mean, realistically, like, will we approve this before the needs assessment?
So that seemed to be the direction that I was getting from you all. It's been a little bit of a struggle to come up with the numbers without having a new needs assessment. Um, which is why they're all like somewhat low and, yeah, um.
I mean, we could bring it through the process, so then just table it, that we have to need to plug in the numbers.
Or move forward with the liberal numbers and then tighten it up once we have it.
Either way.
Given the fact that we're gonna be dealing with a public hearing next in just three weeks, I think. Is that right? The twenty eighth? That would be a little, uh, press, pressing you. Could we, could we do something in February eighteenth, something to that? Because I don't, I, I don't want.
So like a, a more developed draft of the same thing. Yeah, right? Yeah.
Is the twenty eighth, there's a public, public meeting, a public hearing on this?
Uh, no, it's actually on, on our next.
Okay, that's what I thought. I didn't think it was on this.
Uh, on the short term rental, so.
Right.
Uh, but, but I it just occurred to me that preparing for that and putting together of things that we've just been talking about might be a bit much for, uh, for the twenty eighth. So suggest maybe something for the February.
I think short term rentals is gonna be a pretty volatile public hearing.
Yeah.
Well, if we want to jump into that, we can, if you're ready.
Yeah, we're ready. Right, uh, should I announce it as the next item? Yes. Um, next item is the proposed short term rental regulations for the January seventh planning commission meeting, which we are currently at.
Thank you. All right. Again, this is work session, so we're just gonna chat about it. Um, and I just included a clean code section in the slides, but you have the red lines in your packet. I hope that's okay.
Um, yeah, because you can assume that everybody's read this, you know, before the meeting. If not, then they're, they're out, so. I think that's fair, that it, I think if you go too, if you're too thorough, then it encourages people not even to bother to read it, because you're just gonna explain it all. So I think it's fine that you summarize it.
Okay, cool.
I think we didn't have it explained, don't you think?
I think exactly. Well, you, you can, but find the balance on that, you know, Seg.
So in my mind, not too much has changed, just because it's not like completely covered in red lines, and some stuff is crossed out that actually ended up in a different section. Um, so what we're looking at here are two different code sections. We have seven, four, six supplemental regulations. N is short term rental regulations, but then we also have eight, uh, chapter eight, section five of the code, that's discussing the licensing related to short term rentals. Um, I gave you a proposed timeline in the packet, so basically doing a hearing on the ordinance at the next meeting at the end of the month for this, which is what Bill was just pointing out. Um. So if you all think, I mean, we can talk about it, but if you think that's reasonable, we will keep that meeting, because that's, right now, I think that's the only item. Okay?
I think it's reasonable. Staff, can you have everything ready at the time, that time?
So we just kind of needed to do this based on some ADU regulation updates that we did. And um, kind of, it overlaps with short term rental in a couple of different ways, but that's kind of all ironed out in here and in the ADU regulations, um. It's, it went with some reorganizing. So great, let me just scroll through these. The performance standards. Um, I removed two of them and put them into eight, five, into the licensing. It just seemed to make more sense over there. Um.
We just had the CPS clean this whole thing up. The last thing we want to do is mess it all up again.
Yeah. So that was pretty much it for seven, four, six. We just clarified a couple of things, um, and I didn't line it all out here. We added the downtown service zone district to the general commercial and historic business where multifamily structures could be used as short term rentals, or multifamily units could be used as short term rentals, um, if it applies with all the other regulations. The downtown service district, I don't know if I need to pull up a zoning map, but it's a very small zoning district, and it's basically just that long Sherman Street, couple lots on either side.
Not really being utilized, do you think it's a
Yeah.
ill conceived district that will be in the future?
Yeah.
Pressure we were getting to expand the historic business district, so that we would have strip development one.
I remember that.
I don't, I don't think it's ill conceived. I think it's, it's when the time comes, it'll be used by more professional services like owners and dental offices and stuff as we grow. I mean, it's nice to have it as an option. Nothing wrong with it. I don't think it hurts to have it.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything wrong with it. I just expected it to fill out more than that. Yes, that's a maybe ill conceived is the wrong idea. I, I expected more use of it.
Yeah.
Well, it's been in place now for a long time, ten years.
Almost, probably.
Yeah, I mean, they're high pro- profile lots for sure, so.
Seems underutilized, I guess, is a better word to put it.
Um. Let's see, I explained owner occupancy requirements for the other zones. And then I made it kind of clear whether it was a separate structure on a property or, um, various units in one structure for like owner occupancy. So, and then in chapter eight, there's a couple of modifications. Not much. The first two sections just have the adding bedroom instead of room. To explain that nuance. And then, uh, eight, five, three was titled supplemental regulations, so that was just too confusing, because seven or six is supplemental regulations. Um, so I changed this to licensed administration and, um, moved those two um, standards here from the, uh, chapter seven. So I think that maybe makes sense. Reads better. Neither of these is a big code section, which is nice. And then eight, four, five, I just added the note that, um, if there, if a new license is required, it may not be available at the time of application, just full disclosure for people who are toeing the line of getting their, or their license revoked. That might, um, encourage them to not get it revoked.
Or suspended.
Or suspended. Um, that's all I got.
I, I don't think that's gonna be so, I don't think this is gonna be so controversial. I think we already addressed the controversy on this. I don't, I don't expect this to be a heated meeting on, in January. It'll probably be like this. Maybe, I think we have needs, everybody that was concerned.
Yeah, and this does add just a little bit more flexibility with that.
Yeah, I don't foresee any, I don't, I'm surprised you guys said that. I don't see any problem.
So we'll just see. One can never tell.
Right, and then.
What people can get upset of.
If that's the case, Angie, and you're feeling ready to move forward with the uh, affordable housing stuff, I don't think there's anything wrong with, with doing that, but you've got more time if you need it. Right? So we could, we could see it in January or whatever, whatever, whatever you have the capacity to do. We appreciate you.
Well, like I said, I want to do some public outreach, so the next thing that I would probably bring to you is more of that ironed out. And then, yeah, a, a more developed version of what I just presented.
Great.
Um, related to short term rental, I did include the license application in there, just for your information. It's
And look, I don't, there's a few things that are getting changed on there, too.
Yeah, I don't expect any, um, feedback. That's like more of an administrative thing, but there was just a couple of little things that needed to be updated. And like, one of the questions is just getting skipped every time, every time someone submits an application, so I folded it. Um. But yeah, that's, that's it.
Great.
I'm a little confused. I have a, a question.
Sure.
Um, I seen here that we are gonna have the, um, for a short term rental of an ADU, it has to be owner occupied here. And I was on the impression that the city council changed that. That was our, that's what we referred up to them, but I I read in the paper that that was no longer a requirement, so I assume that the council changed it, the neighbor did. Am I misinterpreting over?
Um.
Max?
I didn't think so. I think what, um, what happened in the couple of iterations that we went through is that first we were like not gonna require, or we were gonna require home equity, um, owner like a good seat, and after going back and forth, we decided to remove that. We added it back in for the short term rental.
We added it back in, and was that approved by?
Yeah.
Okay.
The council approved what we recommended.
Yeah.
Because I, I read a, I read a different thing as they, I read it differently.
So in the first reading, they were gonna change it, and then they put it back.
Everything is reading here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear what you said. The second reading is tomorrow, so the final approval is tomorrow. Everything gets a thirty day period or whatever. Okay.
So they read, read that reading, or just tomorrow?
They have a final approval tomorrow.
But will they, before they approve, they're reading out loud? Or they just, it's just.
It was introduced last month.
So it's stipulated?
Yeah. I, I had one question. I probably missed the vote on this somewhere. Is this requirement that you have an agent available at the unit within twenty minutes?
Twenty four hours a day.
Yeah, so that was just moved from the performance standards from the seven, four, six. That's not something I added. It's, it's literally just moved. And on our application, um, that's part of the example here, I don't know if it's front desk, but it makes you provide an owner's agent to help your renters in any emergency situation, or any situation where they need somebody, um, if you don't live here, if you don't live here, or if you're out of town for them.
It's
Or if you're renting out your primary residence. Because keep in mind, this is all for short term rentals. This is not just key use.
It's twenty, when I read it, Ross, it's twenty minutes away, twenty four hours a day during occupancy. So if, if the unit's not occupied, that doesn't apply.
Sure.
But the twenty minutes I didn't realize was in there. That seems they need to be available. I mean, we have a management company in Ridgeway, already right, so there is.
Yeah.
Some people use a neighbor.
Neighbor's better.
Yeah.
And there are some, uh, realtors who do property management in county. But, I mean, I know of one who lives in El Meto, so being on site to in twenty minutes could be a challenge.
So we, you know, obviously, if there's an actual emergency, there's a notebook in there that tells them to call nine one one before they call their owner's agent. The owner's agent, um, would be like, if they can't get the dishwasher to work, or the keys, that, you know, I don't know why else they'd be calling them.
Or if there's
And meeting them there.
There's a serious plumbing leak or something.
If it's not a nine one one call, it's a plumbing leak.
Yeah.
Or he, or no he.
Yeah.
Or they can't get into the unit or something, right? Whatever.
Just seems like thirty would be more realistic.
Yeah.
But I'm not sure it's worth worrying about, because enforcement is gonna be.
Yeah. And, and we're going off of the physical address of that person that's listed, so we're kind of just figuring out how long it would take them to drive there. It doesn't mean like for them to put on pants and brush their teeth and do all that. It's just the drive. Um, and it, I mean, I would assume that the person that's asking their owner's agent to do that is like providing them some sort of compensation, so that's just keeping money local, too.
Yeah, makes sense.
Well, I'm in, I'm in favor of the local contact, I think.
We all agree on that. It's just
Yeah, yeah.
I could go with thirty.
There's a, there's this opportunity there for somebody who wanted it.
Your retirement plan?
Um, excuse me, do you want to comment on that twenty minute rule?
Sure, yeah.
That really does keep it local. You go thirty, you're gonna have more people as an agent living in Montrose, and then it might be like, oh, well, you're thirty, you're forty, okay, uh.
That's a good point.
Five, six, twenty is, if we're doing fine.
Yeah, great.
Nobody's got trouble producing an owner's agent.
Good.
Everybody has that.
Is she needing anything else from us on that?
No, I'll just bring you and, we're gonna send all this to look at next time.
Great, thank you. Um, can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the last month, from November, from November twenty sixth?
So moved.
Bill and Ross. Please.
Okay, roll call vote.
Abstained if you weren't here. I can't remember if everyone's here or not.
Oh. I think somebody was.
It's okay.
I think, oh yeah, everybody was here.
Okay, great.
Okay, so we're voting on the minutes. Uh, Commissioner Hoister.
Yes.
Lisk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Petraselli.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Meyer.
Aye.
Mayor Clark.
Aye.
And Chairperson Montague.
Aye.
Just a comment, it might be a good idea to, in the future, um, note who's on Zoom and who's in person in that call meeting to order section, just, just out of curiosity.
Oh, okay.
Might be helpful.
Uh, anything else? Any updates?
Um, I just want to pass along, I've been approached by local citizens complaining about the, um, enforcement of short term rentals and actually be, having a license, et cetera. I've encouraged them to take it to town council as more of the regulatory body, but I am hearing that.
What, what's their concern?
That there are other people, you know, renting out units on VRBO and other places, but they don't have a license and they don't pay the fees or the taxes.
So the complaint is non licensed rentals?
Yeah.
Okay.
We, we definitely need to get, I mean, thank you for telling them to, not necessarily come to council, but come to staff. And people need to name names if they think that there are people, because Pam would tell you that, that staff does a really good job of scouring all the rental sites. The only, the only kinds of people that might be getting into cracks is if they're not using Airbnb, or they're not using Verbo, they're doing just an independent website and advertising that way, but I still think they can be found, so.
Uh, uh, the use is real obvious to see. So, and it's, I mean, I have three short term rentals on my street, and you know when they're occupied just because of the traffic. So even if it's a, a non, a non VRBO or a non Airbnb, and, and it's a non website, just to word them out, the neighbors should step up.
But they don't. For whatever reason, they don't, and, and.
Didn't I read, uh, on the application, uh, if I'm remembering correctly, that advertisements should include the license number of, of, of a short term rental license.
Yeah, but the point, the point is if people aren't getting a license, they're short term renting without a license, then that doesn't do us any good.
The, the problem is that they're on.
The, the problem is if they're on VRBO or
I only, well, see, my point is I don't think there's anybody that's short-term renting on Verbo or Airbnb. Because we would, we would catch them.
Okay.
So Pam, give you some ammunition. When those people, there's a pretty significant inspection that goes with that license that needs to protect the people who rent that unit. So we need to be adamant about keeping these people inspected and current because renting, rent, a short-term rental owner would shut out back. It's just not at all acceptable.
Right?
Yeah.
So we may want
So, as a commissioner, just use that ammunition, please.
Michelle, I couldn't hear you.
I was just, I was not talking into the public. I had a conversation with John that we should talk, check with, recheck with staff and make sure that that's something that um they are checking. Um, you know, looking at VRBO, looking at Airbnb. I know they've done it in the past. I don't know if they do it on a regular basis.
Is there any way to write a letter to those kinds of companies stating that?
You know, they're not going to enforce it for us. No.
Yeah, no, what, what, uh, just FYI, the, the county and the city bureau A have contracted with an independent company that does that as a service. They, they search out short-term rentals and identify them for the governmental entities so that they can be forced to get a license. Town Bridgeway has not opted to do that because the town, assures the town council that she's on top. So we just need to keep pushing back to make sure, making sure that that's actually happening. And the more people will come forward and say, hey, my neighbor is definitely short-term renting and I know they don't have a license. That's the only way we're going to, and, and if what happens is that the town needs to, to join the same contractor that the city and the county are using, then that's what we need to do.
I'm not sure the contractor is the right punch. I think we, maybe we should put the word out there that we want, that town wants help to stop illegal short-term rentals because of the health, welfare, safety issue. And just put it out as either a newspaper ad or word of mouth or however we decide to do that, but just put it out as a community comment.
I don't know. It's tricky.
I struggle with that. I don't like that, like rat your neighbor. We went through that with COVID. Like turn, turn in your neighbor if they're not wearing their mask properly. I'm not into that.
I'm not favored that way.
I think the town staff probably can take the time to review Airbnb and VRBO.
Which is what the clerks are sure they're doing.
Well, I'm getting in there not.
You got, well.
Well, planning needs to do that. Maybe we could get, maybe we could get it in turn. Hey, what are you doing next week?
Yeah, well, I mean, where's that market? It's local realtors. Like if I was looking for a place
It's online.
Sure.
You got, and you log in online.
If I can find something I like on VRBO or Airbnb or any of the other ones, I'm going to call a local realtor and say, hey, got anything for rent? That's where the market, that's where the, that's where the subsurface market is. That's where the radar market is for SDRs here.
Hmm.
Yeah, when we travel, we call realtors. We call local realtors, say, hey, what do you got?
Hmm, that's good to know.
So I don't know how, that's, I think that's where the market is. I don't know how you, I don't know how you tell me.
Well, to Jack's point, that I would be in favor of is having the town reach out to all the licensed realtors in the county, say, you need to tell us if you have a, a property that you're allowing to be short-term rented.
Period. I think when you get really
You need to tell us. I think you may, you just reiterate the fact that they need to be licensed. The realtors aren't going to come and turn themselves in.
They should. Well, it's, realtors have a professional license that you're required to be, to be able to do this correctly. So if they're not doing it correctly, then they need to fess up. So I, I get real upset about this.
I think the place to start is with the town staff and confirm that that's happening and how often is that happening? If that's being tracked.
I think, let's get
And next, if you want to send a letter out to realtors and reiterate the fact that these need to be licensed and, you know, are we going to put some bind behind it? Are we going to put some teeth in it? Otherwise, telling people to turn their neighbors and I'm, I'm not really going to jump on board with that.
Realtors got a neighbor. I mean, I, I, I'll work in the realtor department.
Okay.
So establishing a relationship with the realtor community as town staff would be important and important for staff for a couple of these topics that we covered tonight.
Great.
Um, I don't know that I want to attack them with a letter saying, you need to pay this money, but, but yes, um, point taken.
I'll, I'll reach, I'll do some reaching out between now and the next meeting.
Any other important topics that we'd like to discuss?
Yeah, we need to talk about the schedule for twenty twenty-five if you all are interested in.
The schedule of our meetings, if we're going to change them based on the, yeah, go ahead.
Um, what, do you all have an idea of what you'd like to do for adjusting the schedule to?
Eight, eight, right.
No, what she's talking about is we, there, there was a request that we um, adjust the, the gap between council and planning. So I was going to
So what, what would work?
Have you guys done some?
Yeah, we just, just did some internal
Okay, so what do you suggest?
Um. The third Wednesday.
Oh, we're switching the day of the week potentially if it's feasible.
It doesn't matter to me. I just, my schedule has changed all the time, but if everybody else
Yeah.
I'm fine. It's fine. I'm, I'm in me.
I'm fine. Yeah.
I probably remember that.
If it doesn't work, we can change it again.
Well, we'd get notified every time.
Why are we changing the day of the week? Um, you have poker club on Tuesday?
No, actually, no.
The
Oh, okay. Fair enough.
That's, I have only been there once. Um, no, it, it helps with our consultants quite a bit. Uh, Max and TJ have a lot of other jurisdictions they're working with.
So they'll charge less if we move our meeting to
Their availability is, their availability is, um, yeah, more open if it's on Wednesdays. Uh, just because a couple of the jurisdictions
Like you know how the fire company is going to charge a higher rate when there's high usage? And then a lower rate when there's not, like that?
Congestion, pressing the
Yeah, thank you.
This is the S and P apron.
Where's Max? He's there.
It helps us, it helps staff get things to the town council in one cycle instead of two.
Yeah, we, we all
But that's the day of the week, the change in
The day of the week is a little helpful because um, obviously it's the same day that, the same day of the week that town council will be on.
I'm, I'm not buying any of that, but I'm okay with it.
Yeah.
Uh, so we're going to go to the third Wednesday.
Max, did you raise your hand?
No, he's not chiming. He's not.
Um, and I'll double check with
So we do have this month? Hmm.
I don't, I think we should maybe, yeah, I think we should maybe stick with
Twenty-eight.
So what would the date be? February fourteenth?
Busy.
You are not. I'm not either.
Yeah. Yeah.
Neither one of us is busy. Jack, that's not for us.
Tonight, too.
We could, we could, um, plan on looking at March, if you want to switch it then.
I'm okay with February. Okay. No, it's no big deal.
Nineteen is that?
Yeah.
Yeah. What does everybody online think? Pam and Jennifer?
They don't care.
Good.
You are on a roll.
No.
Um.
Do we still get our packet on Friday?
Friday before?
Yeah.
Yeah, would still, you'd have one more there.
Yeah.
There's another, one more day. And then I'd have to figure out how to change it in my iPhone calendar. That is the biggest problem. It's a Friday.
If that's your biggest problem, you have problems, girl.
If you all
John can help you.
Yeah, I definitely
If you need to push me to get your packets to you sooner, that's totally fine. That's when we post them on website.
No, we get them the Friday before, right?
Yeah.
That gives us an extra day. And it was here, we got it earlier this time than we normally do.
Yeah, it was great.
Yeah, good, great.
All right.
John? Did you require a
I don't think so. Thanks, John. I'm on the farmers board. Our, it's D, they vote on everything. You don't vote on it. Um, anything else?
That's it? All right, um, we will then adjourn.
All right.
Thanks, everyone.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
We're up to